Good evening all. Welcome to the panel discussion on the Port City Economic Commission Bill, which is organized by the CFP Society Sri Lanka. So, Port City, Colombo is a city developed from a reclaimed land spanning 269 hectares. And once completed, it would have a build area of around 5.6 million square meters. Talking about the foreign investments, it has already attracted the foreign direct investment of 1.4 billion USD, which is the direct investment by the project company, which is a China Harbour Engineering Company, Port City Private Limited. So, today's panel discussion is mainly focusing on the Port City Economic Commission Bill, which is pivotal to the success of Port Colombo Port City competing with the regional special economic zones and the cities in the region. So, talking about the timeline, the Port City Economic Commission Bill was casted in mid-March and it was passed in the Parliament after the adjusting for the amendments of the Supreme Court. And last week, it was signed into law by the Honorable Speaker. Then this week, we saw His Excellency, the President appointed a seven-member Economic Commission for the Economic Commission. For today's panel discussion, we have two panelists. The first panelist is Mr. Neemal Gunodana. Mr. Neemal is a partner with Nita Partners and he is one of the leading capital market lawyers in the country with over thirty years of experience in the financial sector. Neemal has always has been continuously as a leading individual in the fields of banking, finance, corporate, and tax by the legal five hundred Asia Pacific and has been ranked as a leading individual in the fields of banking, finance, corporate, and M&amp;A by the chambers and partners. Currently, he serves in several boards of the Central Bank. He serves as a member of the a member of the Risk Oversight Committee of the Central Bank, a member of the Financial Systems Stability Committee of the Central Bank, Sri Lanka, and serves as a member of the taxation committee of the Chinnon Chamber of Commerce. Our second panelist is Mr. Tulsi Alu Vihari. Tulsi is a reputed business strategist and a financial advisor with the experience in corporate wealth creation through investment divestiture and restructuring. He has over twenty-plus years of experience in London, Melbourne, and Colombo. Currently, he serves as an Assistant Managing Director of the Project Company of Port City, which is a China Harbour Engineering Corporation, Port City Private Limited. And he plays a pivotal role in attracting foreign direct investment, setting up the regulations, working closely with the government authorities. Prior to his current role, he headed the M&amp;A vertical in PWC in Sri Lanka and Maldives. He has been in his tenure fourteen years at PWC, he has worked at Melbourne and has involved in several cross-border multinational transactions. Today's panel discussion would be moderated by Mr. Deshan Kushparaja. Deshan is the Managing Director, Global Markets and Investment Banking at Capitalized Partners. He is an expert in public and private markets and both buy-side and sell-side M&amp;A transactions. He has been with Cal since 2007 and played a pivotal role in making Cal one of the leading financial services companies in Sri Lanka. Further, Deshan is the Director of the CFP Society Sri Lankan, it's a C events committee. So, I'll pass it on to Deshan to start the panel discussion.
Thank you, thank you, Lahiru, for those introductions. So, I welcome again all of you to this discussion. We will start off with a couple of presentations from our two panelists. It would take roughly fifteen minutes each. And once the speakers have presented their initial thoughts, then we can go into a more detailed question and answer session.
Neemal, over to you.
Hi, everybody. I'm supposed to make a presentation on the bill in a general sense. And there is also a part which relates to the Supreme Court decision. If there are any questions, then maybe we could also deal with that part. But in the interest of time, we'll just go through the main provisions in an operational sense in the bill. And then I think Tulsi could add me to it when he deals with the actual practical aspects. Right, so first of all, the name is the Colombo Port City Special Economic Zone. And it's referred to as the Area of Authority. And all land in that zone has been invested in the commission, that's the Port City Commission. And it seems to be that certain land has already been transferred by the UDA presumably to the project company. And that also will be deemed to have been transferred by the commission, right? So now remember, in the case of this land, the commission is owner of the land and then the project company would be a lessor of the land. The land within the area of authority is comprised of government marketable land and project company marketable land. I think in total, there is about 170 hectares or acres out of which sixty percent, I think, is project company and forty percent is government. There will be a master plan of the commission, which is approved by the President, which will be the basis of the zoning and all other development activities which are being implemented within the area of authority. Right, so it's within the scope of the master plan that all the development which would actually take place. Yeah, can you move to the next one please? Yeah, the objects of the commission in a very general sense, they have set out objectives of general investment related objectives. So, leading economic zone in region, foreign direct investment, ease of doing business, enhancing investor confidence. And then there's also mention of specific sectoral investment. So, they're talking about encouraging international trade, shipping and logistic operations, offshore banking and finance, IT, BPO, corporate HQs, regional distribution operations and ancillary services. Furthermore, they are also referring to innovation entrepreneurship, tourism and ancillary services, employment generation, sustainable development, and urban amenity operations. Or in other words, the objects are very general. So therefore, almost a large category of investors could possibly fall within one of these to say that it would be entitled to carry on business within the Port City area of authority. Yeah, now, the commission and how is it funded? The commission has five to seven members, the seven members have already been appointed. The fund of the commission is 400 million given by the project company initially. One percent of all some received from the lease of project company marketable land from the date of the passing of that until 38 June 2028. One percent of all some received from the lease of government marketable land from July 1, 2023 until 38 June 2028. And thereafter, it's the assessment rates, levies and other fees charged and imposed by the commission which should constitute the funding of the commission. So, it seems to be that it is to be self-funded and the manner in which it is funded is this, right? I don't know if by some chance this funding is adequate, but this is the basic scheme of funding the commission. Okay, next. Carrying on business in the area of authority, you need to be an authorized person. And interesting enough, unlike in the case of the Board of Investment or BOI, in the case of the commission and the Port City, you could even have an individual or a partnership which could be an authorized person who could engage in business within the area of authority. So therefore, to that extent, it is a deviation from the BOI provisions which we currently have. As an interim measure, until the infrastructure is up, the commission may authorize an authorized person to even engage in business from outside the area of authority. That is from outside that specific area for a period not exceeding five years. And that will also be considered to be deemed to be engaged in business from the area of authority. In other words, approvals can come, you can start off the activity, except that you won't be actually doing it within that area, but you might be actually doing it outside the area, maximum period of five years. Right, now remember, all this business is business with foreign counterparties, not with local parties, right? So that is the basic foundation upon which this whole authorized person and we learn later that there are certain businesses of strategic importance. All of that is based on the premise that you are actually transacting with non-resident parties. In the case of a company, right, if you are a company and you need to be licensed as an authorized person, you need to be registered as an offshore company under the company's act. Now remember, an offshore company can either be a company incorporated in Sri Lanka which seeks registration as an offshore company or it can even be a company incorporated outside Sri Lanka, which is seeking registration as an offshore company under our company's act. And if in the case of an offshore bank, you also require a license on the monetary board under the banking act. And an application would specify the value of the investments and things like that, like in the case of a normal BOI investment. Now, merely because you're an authorized person, that does not give you any incentives or concessions. So that is one of the things which needs to be noted. So there can be a category of businesses which are carrying on business within the port city which are authorized persons, but which are not enjoying any exemptions or incentives. Now, for example, at the moment, foreign sourced income is exempt from income tax in Sri Lanka. And therefore, a lot of the IT companies, even though set up by foreigners, don't seek any approvals under the BOI because they don't consider that there is anything additional coming from the BOI. So I presume even in the case of authorized person, for example, in area IT entirely or BP, where you are doing entirely work for outsiders and you are getting paid in foreign currency. The person may be just satisfied being an authorized person, but may not need to be approved as a business of strategic importance or a BSI. But remember, incentives and exemptions are only given to BSIs. The exemptions and incentives need to be in accordance with the regulations made by the President, which have been approved by Parliament. So therefore, the overall framework for the grant of the exemption and incentive right have been, remember when I say President, President in his capacity as the minister in charge of the Port City. So if the President decides that he is going to have another minister in charge of the Port City, it would mean that minister, right? So therefore, the overall framework is set out with the regulations within the scope of those regulations. Either Port City, the commission could give exemptions and incentives. Now, this is one of those matters which the Supreme Court had something to say about the wording of that in this regard. The commission in consultation with the President would identify the businesses. And the act itself specifies the enactments in Schedule II of that from which a BSI could be exempted. So, the Inland Revenue Act, the Value Added Tax Act, right? So all those revenue statutes and includes, for example, the Termination of Employment Act, right? So therefore, there is provision to exempt you from the application of that. So remember, within the scope of that, there could be exemptions which are given to a BSI. Now, once again, the Supreme Court had some comments on this with regard to the manner in which those exemptions could be granted. Or in other words, it seems to be indicated that you might not be able to give a blanket exemption from the Inland Revenue Act, for example. So, for example, for a long period of time, a BOI enterprises, there was always a question mark. If you have an exemption under the BOI which results you in you in not having to pay any income tax, do you need to file an income tax return? Now, for a long period of time, that controversy was open. And eventually, I think now they filed income tax returns, but at least until about ten years back, a lot of the BOI enterprises were completely exempt from income taxes to say, no, we have no obligation to file an income tax return either. Right, so therefore, you might be able to exempt from the application of these acts. But the manner in which it is done may not enable you to give what is called a blanket exemption from the entirety of the provisions of that. With regard to banking and finance and capital markets, right, getting on to a specific area, there is provision to carry on offshore banking, this is specifically referred to. Right now, in order to be carry on offshore banking, you need to be registered as an offshore company and also require license by the monetary board as an offshore bank. Now, the general feature of being an authorized person is that you can only carry on business with persons who are not citizens or residents of Sri Lanka. There is one exception to this rule where they can give you specific permission to engage in business with people who are in Sri Lanka. But the Supreme Court very specifically said that if you are doing so, then you should not be in a more advantageous position than a local person who's providing the similar services. But that is an exception, right? But in general, you need to remember that it is all about engaging in business with persons who are not citizens or residents of Sri Lanka. Right, so therefore, if you take some area like investment banking, it is likely that you can carry on investment banking, right? But it is likely that they will not give you permission to engage in investment banking business with a citizen or a resident of Sri Lanka. Right, so in which case do entirely with foreign counterparties. Now, one of the things which should be noted is that within this Port City area of authority, there can be laws which come within the purview of various regulatory authorities. Now, those laws, unless I specifically mention them, have not been displaced. So, for example, there are few laws which have been displaced completely, the UDA law, the BOI law, right? Certain laws, the municipal councils, ordinance, those have been completely dislocated. But in general, remember, the regular prevails. And therefore, if you are carrying on an activity which is regulated, you also would need to get the permission from that relevant regulatory authority. Now, in the case of an area like investment banking, currently, investment banking is almost entirely unregulated. It does not come within the purview of the SEC Act. It's only investment managers who find in a very narrow way who come within the purview of the SEC Act, right? So therefore, if an investment bank, for example, sets up in the Port City, right? It is likely that the SEC would not have any regulatory authority over such an investment bank. However, you need to note that the new SEC Act is talking about regulating market intermediaries who are currently not regulated. For example, they're talking about corporate finance advisors, they're talking about investment managers, they're talking about investment analysts, and they're talking about financial planners being additional categories of market intermediaries who are to be regulated. Now, if by some chance, the new SEC Act comes into being and there is regulation around those, then the SEC needs to ensure that that wording does not impinge upon somebody working in the Port City who is rendering services entirely to non-resident persons, right? Because if by some chance, they also fall within the scope of regulations, I think they would find it unacceptable that they are not, they are not rendering any service to any person in Sri Lanka, but yet have fallen within the purview of the SEC. Now, with regard to regulatory aspects of SEC, the SEC regulations would continue to be applicable within the Port City unless the Port City itself publishes regulations in respect of those matters. If it publishes regulations in respect of those matters, then in such a case, those Port City regulations would be what would regulate those persons who are acting within the area of authority. Now, it is possible for an AP to contract some part of its work to existing players in the market. That's possible, right? Because the restriction is on carrying on business with a person in Sri Lanka, with a resident or citizen in Sri Lanka. We generally don't consider the back end of it as being carrying on business. So if you are carrying on an assignment for, let's say, a client in, let's say, the UK, right? But you want some part of it subcontracted to somebody in Colombo who's outside the area of authority. In my view, right, that would not contravene the prohibition on engaging in business with a citizen or resident of Sri Lanka. It's not, it's just the back end which is being done. In general, since foreign income is exempt from income tax, an AP may be able to carry out activities without being a BSI. So you may not require registration as a business of strategic importance, right? You might be just satisfied with being an AP till being able to do some activity like investment banking. Okay, next. Yeah, so role of Sri Lankans in the Port City. As an investor, right? You cannot utilize your foreign currency balances in the domestic banking system to make an investment. Furthermore, you cannot borrow from domestic banks for the purpose of making the investment in foreign currency. Right, so even your domestic foreign currency balances cannot be used for that purpose. However, as a local, you can purchase a condominium or government marketable land or a project company marketable land. If you're a local, you can purchase any of those with local currency. Right, so I think initially, the point was that you could buy condominiums with local currency, but marketable land, right, should be paid for in foreign currency. But I think eventually, what the bill says is or that says is that whether it's government marketable land or even project company marketable land, if you're a local, you could pay for it in foreign currency and that could constitute a part of the investment for the purpose of meeting the minimum investment requirements. So you could have the rest of the investment coming from a foreigner from outside because you can't put for anything other than land, you can't use rupees. So the rest of the investment could come in rupees, the land has been put in by you by utilizing rupees, that's possible. So, you can be employed in the Port City and you'll be paying foreign currency and you can credit that to a personal foreign currency account and your income will also be exempt from income tax. No prohibition on Sri Lankan providing support services to an AP. But however, it's likely that all that income which you get from providing those support services would be liable to all domestic taxes, right? So it will be just like anything else, right? So, my take on this is ease of doing business. What has the Port City brought about? Starting a business, you need to set up an offshore company. As opposed to, if you are going through the BOI, you need to set up just a normal company. A normal company is easier to set up, easier to set up than a offshore company. By and large, I don't think starting a business, there's much of a change. Construction permits. Since the UDA and the municipal council, municipal council regulation would not be applicable and it will be the development control regulations of the Port City itself which would be applied. Remember, those other approvals would still be applicable, right? So it's only the UDA and the municipal council approvals which may not be required. But if you require permission from, let's say, the Post Conservation Authority or the environmental authority, right? So CE, now all those approvals would need to be obtained in the same way, right? Maybe the Port City Commission will facilitate those approvals, but yet those approvals need to be obtained. Getting electricity presumably should be easier than getting electricity maybe in some area where you set up outside. Registering property unchanged, no change. Getting credit unchanged. But however, it might be marginally more difficult since foreign currency in Sri Lanka cannot be used. So you can't go to a local bank and then borrow money, right, for your Port City operations. Or at least, the domestic banking system cannot provide lending, right, to facilitate the investment. Protecting minority investors, worse, right? Because the companies act, large parts of the companies act are being made unapplicable. So therefore, you won't have any protection at all if you are a minority investor. I don't think that's too much of an issue because I don't think there will be minority investors and majority investors. I think there will be just one investor in most cases. Paying taxes, it's easier because presumably it will be a tax-free zone. Trading across borders, unknown. These are the headings which I use for ease of doing business in order to give a ranking to Sri Lanka. Trading across borders, once again, most of it would be services. So really, it's unknown as to how services are really affected about trading across borders. But one thing is, the customs ordinance has been, is inapplicable in respect of. or it can be made inapplicable in respect of a B S I. Right? So therefore, that may assist you in some, some aspects. Enforcement of contracts. Theoretically, it may be marginally easier since they are referring to court processes being expedited. Or in other words, the court should give priority to, to cases which involve the port city. But that's easier said than done. And remember, this international commercial arbitration center really does not expedite any process because that only deals with that, that would only be fully applicable in respect of contracts between the commission and an investor. Right? So therefore, there are very few disputes, for example, between the B O I, right? And its investors which go to court. The main disputes which the B O I has is basically all the employees have sued them in some labor tribunal or their suppliers sued them in some district court. Now, that sort of litigation, right, will still be prevalent. It won't be caught up by, presumably it won't get caught up by arbitration processes. No, can you get out of the court process in Sri Lanka in respect of those sort of disputes? Resolving insolvency, it's worse because this is not only a company incorporated in a particular jurisdiction. For example, you can have a company incorporated in UK which is registered as an offshore company in Sri Lanka, which has gone insolvent. Right? So therefore, how to resolve that insolvency, there will be UK assets, there will be Sri Lankan assets, liabilities in both jurisdictions, right? It will be, in my view, much more difficult than a normal insolvency involving a domestic company. Right? Once again, as I told you, an offshore company could be a locally incorporated company which is registered as an offshore company, in which case it's almost the same. But if it's a company incorporated overseas, which is being registered as an offshore company here, in solvency or resulting insolvency would be quite difficult. Employing workers is the heading for ease of doing business. How easy is it to employ workers? This is not about getting rid of workers, right? So with regard to employing workers, the rules would remain unchanged, right? Because eventually you still need E P F, E T F registration. Those sort of registrations would still be required. Maybe if you are employing expectate workers and all, it may be a bit easier. But other than that, I think it's really unchanged. So that's my really take on ease of doing business and how the port city helps. But one thing which should be remembered, one significant difference between the current B O I regime and port city. Under the port city, if you want to be a business of strategic importance and be entitled to any concessions or exemptions, then you need to go through a process. The process is, the commission recommends to the president. The president submits it to cabinet, cabinet approves, it is gathereded. By order published, there is a gazette which is published, right? And then it is submitted to parliament for information purposes. Or in other words, every single business which wants to be a B S I, we'll have to go through that process. Right? Unlike the current B O I. The B O I currently, the generality of businesses, the approval just comes from the B O I and that's the end of it. It's only strategy development projects, which are the large projects which eventually need through, to go through a process of cabinet gazetting and in that case, approval from parliament. So therefore, I think there is a significant difference with regard to the approval process with regard to the generality of businesses which may set up within the port city, but who still want to be classified as a B S I. Yeah, that's my take on it. But I think maybe if there are some questions later, we can take it up. Thanks.
Thanks, Neomar. Thank you for that. I, can I now call, call upon Tulsi also to share his thoughts? Tulsi, it's been a long time coming, the passing of this bill and I'm sure you're excited about it. So maybe you can share some thoughts with us. I, I hope the technical glitches are sorted now. Tulsi, would you?
Yeah, okay. Can you see my screen now?
Yes, we can. Yeah.
Great. One second. Right. Hi. Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Neomar, for that detailed presentation. I think since most of you actually know a lot about port city now, more from an infrastructure development perspective, I'm not going to really spend a lot of time on it. But I think there were a few interesting thoughts that Neomar discussed on his last slide on ease of doing business. Probably he might be able to, I like to kind of further discuss on that. So let me quickly run through on our progress of the committed 1.4 billion. We have invested thus far about 1.1 billion. So as we speak now, close to 100 hectares of land is ready for construction. In addition to the, the 1.4 billion, we have also come forward with another further investment about first 1 billion for a mixed-use development and we have also partnered with a local conglomerate to develop the first phase which consists of three residential towers and then two commercial towers with a retail podium. With a $450 million investment, we hope to break ground before end of this year on that. This is just to give you some context. So the total of port city consists of 74 land plots, about 178 marketable plots. The chart on your right really shows the division of land between the government of Sri Lanka and the port city or the project company. So as you can see there, of the 269, 116 hectares is given, or there is a leasehold right in return for the 1.4 billion invested by the project company. Of the 153 hectares of government land, a 62 hectares of marketable land and 91 hectares which is public spaces, public spaces. So one third of port city is accessible for everybody. So half of, if you look at the chart on the left, that's the split between residential, office, retail, hospitality. Half of port city development, about 6.3 million in Glossvo area. I think Desha mentioned 5.7. There have been certain tweaks to the master plan now. The developable area now is 6.3 million square meters of total crossflow area. Everybody has seen this master plan. I'm not going to really discuss any further on this. I think what is important is also to look at Sri Lanka's F D I landscape. Historically, how we have failed and, and actually a need for an A Z Z to develop this port city. So if you look at the graph, the last 10 years F D Is, we have barely touched a billion. Except for year 2017 and 2018, we have gone beyond a billion. That is also predominantly contributed by the Ambantota Port Development Investment. So our F D Is have predominantly been on, in property development, tourism and ports. We have really managed or not managed to diversify and attract F D Is especially into the services sector, which I will discuss in my next slide. What is interesting on the chart given below is that on this F D Is, close to 50% is reinvestment by existing foreign companies. So when Dala Gasiata re-invested their retained earnings, that is also counted as F D I. So we have really poorly performed in terms of attracting F D Is into greenfield projects. This is the, the services sector and how we have performed in terms of attracting F D Is compared to the emerging Asian countries. From electronics to textiles, I T software, transportation, financial services, if you look at it. Let's take for example, I T and software. We have only managed to attract 0.1% of the F D Is compared to countries like India, China, Singapore, which, you know, take the majority, the share of that F D I. So the, this is good and bad. This shows that although we are predominantly a services-driven economy, we have still been managing with traditional services and we have failed to embark on more modern services like I C T, financial services, fintech, professional services, et cetera. So there is a lot of potential to grow in the services sector. If you take the services sector growth in the last 10 years, the modern services have grown by close to about 10%, whereas the traditional services have grown at about a 5% C A G R. But the modern services contribution to the GDP is overall about, is about less than 10%. So there is a lot of potential and I feel with the, with the infrastructure provided in port city and with implementation of the proposed A Z Z law, we will be probably better positioned to try and attract more F D Is to the services sector specifically to promote modern services. There is another slide which discusses really, there had been a negative growth overall in the services sector. And I think more interestingly, the chart below shows the investment approvals in the services sector by B O I. So from an application to actually realized investments is almost 50%, which means due to inherent bureaucracies, some of these initial approvals have not really transpired into real contracts. I think Neomar touched upon some of these provisions. I'm not going to discuss this again. So these are some of the key features in the proposed A Z Z law, which we believe that would place port city in a, in a competitive position in the region to attract some of these large businesses, multinational companies to relocate or expand into port city. I think many of you know, we rank quite poorly in doing business. We have been 99. Five years ago, our ranking was the same. Look at India and China. They have made significant progress. So there is a lot of competition for us in order to attract capital and talent to port city. So this is, I think, something that Neomar touched upon. Probably we can discuss a bit further on some of these aspects which I may have a different view on, 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 on some of them. So from starting a business, construction permit, getting let city, registering a property, I feel with a single window facilitator and considering that this is a planned city, we will have significant advantages within port city. If I may touch upon now, for instance, if you look at this chart on a registering property, we rank 138 in, in doing business index. Now, if you kind of deep dive into this ranking, the registering property is really looked at in three or four aspects. The, the process of registration, time it takes to register, cost involved and quality of land administration index. So if I, if I specifically talk about the quality of land administration index, we have scored 5.5. These are according to the World Bank of, out of 30. So this is because really our information is not transparent. Title clearance has been significant issues, lands have to be surveyed, approvals has been a cumbersome task. So within port city, since it's a planned city, all these approvals are in place as we speak. So for all 74 plots in terms of supply of utilities, assessment of requirements, all that is all been set. And I think Neomar mentioned about coast conservation approval, that is already is in place, even an environmental impact assessment. So we did three E I As, two for vertical, two for reclamation and infrastructure development and one E I A was already done for vertical development. So, so I believe that registering a property, getting electricity, construction permits, all will be much faster compared to our existing process. So in our existing process for a land registering, we take 20, 29 days. That includes obviously title search, surveys, et cetera, et cetera. Here it's brand new, clear title that we are creating within port city. Happy to obviously have further discussion on this. Just to touch upon competition for capital, even some of these developed companies have embarked on real reforms. UAE declared from June 2021 that foreign companies are permitted to own 100% outside free zones. Before, prior to that, only within the free, free zones, foreign companies or foreigners are allowed to own 100%. So that has been relaxed. They are also introducing a 10-year golden visa to professionals, expectates to relocate to UAE. And India, actually, India started these A Z Z process way back in 2005. They proposed, now proposed, they enacted special economic zone law of 2005. 15 years later, I mean, they have close to about 300 A Z Zs scattered around India. But if they, if you look at their success, actually, they have not been successful. One of the main reasons behind that is because the A Z Z authorities established to govern and manage these A Z Zs really lacked the economic and governance freedom from the central government. So it was quite a bureaucratic process and these authorities who were managing these A Z Zs were also housed with the secretaries of various line ministries. So what, India, obviously, why it was a failure is because already they had a massive bureaucratic process and they really created another process within it. However, they have more recently appointed a commission to identify what those issues are. An interesting, one of the very interesting reform is now what they have brought four regulators in the financial services sector, that is the Reserve Bank of India, the Securities and Exchange Commission, their insurance regulator and their pension regulator under one apex regulator called International Financial Services Centre Authority. So literally, these powers of these existing four regulators in the financial services sector now is vested with one apex body. And if you are operating within this A Z Zs coming under the Indian A Z Z Act of 2005, you will only have one regulator. Now, contrary to what we have here, I think within port city, what I feel is probably when we operationalize it, we may face few difficulties because within port city, the existing regulators still have jurisdiction. Second point is that although the commission has powers to enforce it, concurrence of the regulator is required. So I'm not too sure whether this is creating additional burden rather than actually making the ease of doing business much streamlined. So we are yet to find out, but we were meant to understand that it is not in line with the constitution to have two regulators, but obviously, India has done it. These are some of the other examples of, obviously, Singapore, they are granting foreign entrepreneurs to relocate to Singapore with a two-year visa. Plus, you can convert that into a permanent residency and you are also eligible for citizenship. If you are setting up your headquarters in Singapore, you can be even exempt from any corporate income tax. Singapore government is actually, provides a lot of support for startups. The chart on your bottom shows that your profits earned can be exempt up to even 75% in the first three years for, to promote startups. For, to promote startups. So this is our five year strategic plot rollout plan. We have identified about twenty plots uh that these equate to about sixty hectares. Uh the investment required for these plots are about five billion. And uh those highlighted plots of the seventy four plots, these twenty plots, and we hope that we can realize these investment. And some of these investments have already been committed. Uh some of these uh have been signed. And some of them, some of them actually was waiting until the law uh was enacted and you will hear in the near future that we will finalize some of these investment proposals. And benefits of Port City, probably everybody has seen this slide. There's enough literature in the market on this. I think one of the main things that I wanted to really emphasize here is the supply chain impact of Port City. I know Mal mentioned that, you know, sourcing goods and services from rest of Sri Lanka is not restricted. It's the other way around. For an authorized person is not permitted to do business within Sri Lanka. So what it means is that all businesses, whether goods or services, have the ability to supply their services to Port City. And uh earning any designated foreign currency. So it will be deemed as an export. Now, why it is advantageous is that some of our existing, probably even small and medium enterprises which lack the scale or the compliance cost was quite high for them to really compete in an export market. Now, with Port City, they will have a platform uh really to supply to Port City, goods or services, and then obviously scale it up. So there's significant opportunity even for professionals, for bankers, lawyers, accountants, you know, having the ability to give their services. Uh to some of the large multinational companies who may come and set up in Port City. I think uh the other, other advantage is that because of the interim provision. Allowing uh once obviously now the law is enacted, because the interim provision that the companies now can set up outside Port City. Uh in the next five years, I think we'll provide a much needed lifeline for our, our uh struggling real estate market in Colombo. Yes, I think that's all from me. Happy to take any questions, uh Nishal.
Thanks, uh thanks Tulsi and then thanks Neomar for your thoughts. So uh I, I'll kick things off with a few questions. Uh and if our audience also has any questions, you can post it on our Facebook page. Uh on the comment section of the live webinar that's going on and I'll try to take a couple of questions uh uh from there as well. Uh Tulsi, uh to start off with you, uh you did mention uh about special economic zones even in India and how, you know, government of India had experimented with it for fifteen years but had not succeeded. So obviously, one part of this puzzle is the, is the physical land and the development of the buildings. Uh but what would you, what do you think it would take for Sri Lanka's special economic zone, the Port City, to actually succeed in attracting businesses? Uh you know, what would be a differentiating factor?
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, Deshul, if we fail to attract that secondary demand. Obviously, Port City will be a failure, right? For the five primary developers to come and make an investment, they need to be confident about that. Uh second, so if you really think about uh the profile of investments into Port City, I think we will have three types of investments, right? One is the less capital intensive uh businesses, headquarters. I T companies, shipping and logistics, offshore banks. Attracting them with, obviously, they are not capital uh intensive businesses. The second type is the residential developers, again, much more a short term return. Driven oriented, right? And the third type is more the commercial developers who are looking at a, a reasonable yield. With a recurrent income uh over a longer period of time. Now, that, that segment should be uh our key. Right? For us to get to attract investment in that segment, we should be addressing the, the businesses. Or the less capital intensive, where do we get that demand from? Now. One of the key advantages, if you look at other S E Cs who has been successful, uh has been the location advantage. Access to markets, right? I think in that sense, uh they are strategically located, although we have not been able to leverage on that location advantage. So the second thing is we need to ask ourselves, look, we have massive cost advantages, right? Let's compare Singapore, Dubai, Hong Kong, some of these hubs. Compared to those in terms of doing business, we have, we are about eighty percent lower or pretty the other way, Singapore or these destinations, about three times higher uh from a doing business cost perspective. However, we have still not managed to attract or plug into the global services supply chain. So my take on it is primarily that has been due to few reasons. Obviously, doing business in Sri Lanka uh with the existing bureaucracies, including B O I has not really facilitated some of the businesses. B O I has been really driving more large capital intensive investments and not really looking at getting some large brands into Sri Lanka. So we have, I don't think we have really marketed ourselves in that, that aspect. Now, if you ask me, look, does this Port City law addresses some of those pain points uh for businesses to relocate? I definitely think so. I think we are now quite ready to have some serious conversations with large brands because with this legal construct that it is really an offshore destination, so use Colombo Port City to do business elsewhere. That is really the, the ethos so from paying taxes. Uh in terms of the uh currency risk has been a huge issue. If you look at in Sri Lanka, right? Uh we are facing that even at the moment. So if you have as an offshore or an unresident company, uh you will not be subject to any foreign exchange costs. So there is no zero taxes. Corporate income tax, personal income tax is zero. And uh hopefully, you know, the, the commission, as it says, will be a, a single window investment facilitator and go through all the approvals required in expeditious manner to facilitate these businesses. So when you have or when you can tick those boxes, I don't see why we can now really why we will not be able to attract some of those large multinational companies, businesses to, to relocate. I'm quite confident that uh we can do that and we will be shortly actually engaging with a global strategy consultant to really have that our investor outreach, to have some of those conversations with anchor tenants.
Uh thanks Tulsi, just a follow up question on that. Uh and as you quite rightly said, there is a property development angle, which is what C H C is by nature, then you also have but you need the businesses to come set it up and before you can get, I think that, that needs to be interest before that, there will be enough developers to come in and these box of land and building. Uh who, who is going to really be driving that initiative? Is it, does it fall on the commission? Does that fall on the, the project uh development company? Is it going to be a collaborative effort? Who is going to be driving?
I, I, look, it has to be a collaborative effort, right? Uh simply because there is geopolitics at play as well. So obviously in terms of because in my opinion, we need the Indian these businesses, Indian primary developers to come in. Uh set up in Port City, right? With the existing tensions between the two countries, honestly, it has been a challenge for us to really talk to some of the large primary developers in India. Because for them to come and invest, they need to get the the approval of the Reserve Bank of India, you know, because their capital account is quite restricted. So rebalancing that image to say that this is really a, a, a government project. And then for that, government needs really champion it. So for those sort of a conversation, I, I, I feel G to G government to, uh government uh conversation uh needs to, needs to happen. However, uh if you look at we have already made an investment of one point one billion and there's, you know, so we will commit one point four billion. So it's in great interest for us. That this has to be a success. Because of that one point four billion, there is certain amount, obviously, we have borrowed. And um our repayments to our financial institutions have kickstart actually in last year. So we need to start making those payments. So, so I think it will be a collaborative effort. Yeah, I mean, I mean, we are yet to see how this commission will really run. A D G or a C E O is, is yet to be appointed. So, um, yeah.
Thanks, Tulsi. Uh Neomar, uh one question for you on, on this taking up Tulsi left off. We saw a commission being appointed by the Excellency the President uh a few days ago. Um as, as per how the, the act is structured, uh is it the commission that's going to be driving uh most of the initiatives or is it, uh is it the director general who will then be appointed by this commission and the executive branch uh once that's up and done?
Yeah, I think it's quite clear that it will be the director general who will, who will run the show. This commission is like a board of directors in a company. Uh it's not like the S E C where I think the S E C is slightly different structure where the chairman, uh I think, uh takes on more executive functions. Right? But I think this commission, it's reasonably clear that it will be uh by and large non-executive and I think they are exovisual members as well. And also when you look at the members of the commission themselves, I don't think they can devote their full time either to the to the affairs of the commission either. So it will be the director general, I think, who will be key, who will have to drive this whole process.
Okay, uh and there was obviously a lot of talk around the passing of this bill itself, uh the Supreme Court determinations around some of the original provisions of the bill. Uh can, uh can you talk us through some of the main changes or main observations that the Supreme Court made and how that changed the the overall structure of the bill itself? Was there any structural changes that came out of that Supreme Court?
Right, I'll just summarize it there. So uh by and large, there were some preliminary objections which are taken up, namely that this area of authority did not fall within the territorial limits of Sri Lanka. And therefore that uh it did not form part of Sri Lanka and therefore that it would not possibly legislate in respect of such an area. And there was also another technical objection taken up that uh the Port City Commission carried out certain functions which fall within the province of the provincial councils, which required approval from the provincial councils. And since the provincial councils are defunct at the moment, that, that without that approval, that the bill could not be taken up. So all those preliminary objections were dismissed. However, there were two matters which I think uh were had some im- important implications. The original bill indicated that with respect to approvals which had to be got from regulatory authorities, that the Port City Commission would obtain that approval and get the concurrence of that regulatory authority. With the regulatory authority being under some sort of obligation to provide such, such concurrence expeditiously. Supreme Court said no, right? That is an exercise of uh, uh the powers of those regulatory authorities. That cannot be done. So therefore, uh the position is that consequently some amendments which are recommended by the Supreme Court. The regulatory, the, the regulatory authority needs to give its decision with respect to a matter which falls within their purview and which falls within the area of authority. Right? So therefore, that is a given. It's not the commission which gives that, that approval. It is a regulatory authority which has to give that approval. Now, that obviously cuts across the single window facilitator concept to some extent. Because the single window facilitator concept would mean that you go to the single window and they would get you all the approvals. Implicitly indicating we can give you the approval, right? You just need to send in the application to me. I will get you all the tools, I will give you all the approvals obtained in the concurrence of the relevant authority. So that was a significant change which occurred, which has some implications. The other change which occurred was that with regard to the grant of exemptions and concessions, the act seemed to indicate that the commission itself could give those concessions and exemptions from the application of the acts which are mentioned in schedule two. That is the inner revenue act, the VAT act and various things. And that the president may make regulations in respect of how that approval should be granted, may make regulations. The Supreme Court said, no, that's not the way. The president has to make, must make, shall make the regulations. And you can only give concessions and exemptions within the scope of what uh has been regulated by the president. And remember, the regulations which are made by the president eventually needs also to be approved by parliament. So there would be regulations in general which are made by the president, approved by parliament. And the commission would be able to give uh, uh the approval or the concession or the exemption within the scope of uh the overall scope of those regulations. So uh from a, from a practical point of view, both those had some implications because the, the unfettered discretion of the commission had to either give you uh some, uh approve some uh give you some approval for some regulatory matter which failed within the purview of some other regulatory authority. Or to give you a concession or an exemption, uh seems to have got restricted.
Thanks, Neomar. Uh Tulsi, you had a view on the ease of doing business and the single window. Do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I think on the, on the registration of property, I kind of touched upon it. To add to what Leo, Neomar was saying, I think he's quite right. That, uh you know, that the whole objective of a single window facilitator and having given a lot of powers to the commission is to really cut across a lot of those bureaucracies which have been inherent in our whole system, right now. The, the based on the verdict by the Supreme Court, which says that, look, the decision of the regulator rather than concurrent is, needs to be obtained. Which suggests that obviously there is a greater role to be played by the, the regulator. However, also the law provides that the commission will seek these regulators to set up their office within the area of authority. And it specifically says the relevant regulatory authority shall ensure that such office is managed by officers of sufficient seniority and authority. So the objective really is there is, yes, okay, you still need to prove it. But hopefully it can be done in a very expeditious manner by some of these regulators having departments, offices within the, or under the, the, the commission, within the commission. I think on the ease of doing business, I, I think some of my slides kind of touched upon it. On registering, all, all in terms of the property side of things, getting electricity to all approvals. I think it has to be much faster. And even on a company registration, yes. Obviously, under section eleven, part eleven of the company that, these, they will have to seek registration. But again, our thinking is that there'll be a, a desk at the, at the Port City to address, to address and attend, attend to those. And more importantly, on, there'll be a, there'll be what is called an estate management company. As a joint venture uh between the government of Sri Lanka and the project company. As a joint venture between the government of Sri Lanka and the project company to be set up. So the main objective of that estate management company is again, whilst the commission is really a single window to facilitate business approvals, et cetera, et cetera, there could be certain amount of powers be delegated by the commission to the EMC in terms of collecting rates to managing all the common areas within Port City. Again, that provision had been brought in to make sure there'll be a much more efficient process and a quality of service provided within the port city compared to what we experienced in, in Colombo.
Thanks, Lucy. And let me read out one of the audience questions I think that's directed at you. What is the current take-up rate? That is the question in terms of the plots that you showed us today. I, I heard the Honorable Minister also saying that there are few especially hospital bans that have committed. Are you able to tell us a little bit about what, you know, what kind of commitment that you've seen so far? And if there are any brands that you can explicitly mention at this point of names coming in?
No, so the biggest missing piece have been the law for anybody to really make a real commitment, right? As I showed in my slides, we have identified about twenty plots, about sixty hectares as our initial rollout plan. I can tell you of that, close to about fifteen hectares. We have commitments. So that's a decent run rate if you look at it, saying that obviously we have just enacted the, the law. So for about fifteen hectares, there is, there is, there is commitments and we expect that within the next ten years, we will be able to complete phase one. Phase one will consist close to about seventy hectares. So by twenty thirty, at the same time, we need to also be cognizant that, look, our sales velocities may not be like how, how it was in Dubai ten years ago, ten, fifteen years ago. But the initial interest in Sri Lanka had been quite good, quite encouraging, even under these challenging circumstances and also by some of the local investors. There is definitely a inherent restriction by the law that they need to raise all these funds overseas. But I think that will also give some of the local developers, investors an opportunity to really partner with some of the local foreign investors.
Thanks, thanks, Lucy. Nirmal, another question for you from the audience related to this last point Tulsi made. Can local banks set up offshore banking units within the port city?
Yes, they can. And they, I think, probably they will, the local banks will. Because, you know, probably they might have, they might have a concession tax rate or something like that or the no taxes. But I think at moment, the offshore banking is also subject to tax. So very likely, they might be one of the earliest, the locally incorporated banks. Not necessarily the foreign banks which are operating in Sri Lanka, but maybe the locally incorporated banks, I think, might be some early takers.
Okay, that's, Tulsi, did you have anything to add, add there as well?
Yeah, I, I think Nirmal is right. And there's a great opportunity because of this lot of restrictions in our foreign exchange. I think it'd be, has a absolute opportunity for locals' banks to really set up their offshore banking unit there. And also see large developers, even such as Port City. When we set up within Port City, so how the law had defined this is doing business in and from Port City. So anybody who may not really even have a real direct export of foreign source of income, but who may set up within Port City to transact within Port City also will come under that same definition.
Right, right. Tulsi, regarding, regarding, you know, where the, you know, where the interest is going to come from, in your view, and where would you be spending most of your time in terms of, both in terms of project developers and in terms of businesses? Because these two could come from different source markets completely. Where would you really be spending it? And there's a lot of, you know, talk about Chinese investment. Do you think that's where it's going to come from or, you know, what geographies do you think?
Yeah, so we have, we have identified few primary markets. India is definitely one, Middle East, Singapore and China, right? And we have already appointed marketing, sales agents in those countries to promote our development. In fact, actually, we were really planning a big bang once the law is implemented. But due to obviously, obvious reason due to COVID, we are unable to do that. Of these markets I mentioned, I think one of the challenges are going to be in attracting that investment from India. And that's a market that we definitely need to break into. And I hope, yeah, I, I hope that we can do that and then we will have some one-on-one discussion with some large real estate developers in India. The, the, with the proposed concessions and very relaxed regulation environment, I don't see why not an Indian developer who has to go through a massive approval process in terms of their property development side will not choose Sri Lanka. And especially because your currency risk is negated. Right? You can invest in dollars and you can take your return out in dollars. So I don't see why not.
Yeah, that, that's, that's interesting. Nirmal, you talked about the, the court process and the arbitration process and and how you see that playing out. Do you think that the scope for the arbitration center here can be expanded or was this designed in such a way that it was only for the purpose of the dispute between the S C C or the, sorry, the, the commission and the, and the developers?
No, eventually, as Tulsi mentioned, eventually it is an off take of who the eventual the investors are who are going to be in this zone. So eventually they will have transactions with outside parties. And if there is a reasonable amount of confidence in the arbitration center, then they would choose the arbitration center as a forum for dispute resolution. But fact of the matter is that, that is something which is entirely voluntary between the parties, who will be in the zone and maybe outside, who would enter into contract. So that is, that would depend, I think, on the number of investors and the, the amount of external dealings which they have and the confidence of the center itself. But from a point of view of operationalizing the center itself, it doesn't mean that all your disputes are going to end up in the center. Because it's only the disputes between the commission and an investor which compulsorily needs to be decided by the arbitration center. Everything else is mutual.
And, and, and you also commented that the practicality of the court system in Sri Lanka prioritizing disputes coming from the port city, we'll have to wait and see how that goes. What are your thoughts? Do you think that, you know, special court should be set up for this purpose? So, you know, how would the, the court system tackle something like?
No, first of all, Deshan, the question is, what are the sort of disputes which are likely to arise? Right now, for me, I think there is a doomsday scenario here with somebody needs to deal with. Right? We are dealing with services here, right? And for example, you can have, let's say, a, a, a head of an offshore bank who's an expat who comes here, hundred and fifty thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars salary per annum. Now, when he's working in Singapore, Hong Kong, he very well understands the basis on which his employment works, higher and fire. So he is given one month notice and then he leaves and he has to go home and there's nothing much more to eat. But if he is fired from here, right? He can go, the Termination of Employment Act doesn't apply, so he can be fired. Right? But he is entitled to go before a labor tribunal in Colombo. And if he has put in one year service here, right, the average would be, he'll get three years compensation, right? So therefore, he'll walk off with six hundred thousand dollars, right? That will be the end of Port City and services. In my view, the end of story, right? Because nobody will touch it because they'll say basically the cost of employment there is so high, it's, it's so, we need to provide for so many contingencies there, right? Let's not go anywhere, that's.
Yeah, if I, if I may add to that question, Deshan, I think the, obviously, firing is quite costly here. So that's why that Termination of Employment of Workmen's Act is exempted under Schedule Two. But all the other laws are not exempted. So I, I suppose by default, you can assume that will apply. But our thinking is most of these offshore companies, probably Nirmal can comment, I mean, what is restricting them to have normal employment contracts with these employees? And you'll be only governed by those contracts like we have now for some of the expat staffs. I mean, can that be done?
Yeah, no, actually, our, our employment laws are, you won't be able to say it's governed by the laws of the UK or something like that and get off. Since when you go before the labor tribunal, they, they, they are entitled to undertake jurisdiction to hear that dispute. So it won't, you might be able to get it off by not making them employees or something like that, but it will be, it will be quite a process. And as I understand it, for example, the first stage of development would include I T and B P Os. Those, those, the majority of those employees are used to employment contracts. I don't think they are going to come up with anything less than an employment contract to work in that zone. They will need, locals will definitely need. They might be getting paid double what they are getting paid outside the zone, right? But notwithstanding all that, when they are fired, right, they are, even if it's M D, they, 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 they get whatever they have to get, right? They, they get their last pound of flesh and get out.
But the, the Termination of Employment Act doesn't apply.
Yeah, yeah, I know. That, that's prevent, the Termination of Employment Act says that you cannot get rid of an employee without the permission of the commissioner or with the consent of the employee. So that doesn't apply. So he's fired. The only thing is, then in such a case, he's entitled to compensation from a normal labor tribunal.
Nirmal, on that, on that note, there is also a question from the audience. Will foreign lawyers or law firms be allowed to, to, you know, engage in dispute resolution within the port city and would that also be one of the services that could potentially be, be provided from there as a, as a business?
Right. Now, this was an interesting question. The word professional services was studiously avoided at the time of drafting, right? Because of lawyers and accountants, I think they are so inward looking, right? I think the only way, right, the lawyers could have gone out, out of the, actually, the, the dump that we are in. And the accountants also, they are in a dump, even though they don't even realize it, right? Is by getting these outside services providers to, to come into the port city for our people to work under them, to understand how the processes work, right? And get understanding of international transactions, the same development that our government industry went through. From the early nineteen eighties, right, they, the Singapore and then the Hong Kong government factories relocated. We learned the processes, we learned what was done, and then eventually we were able to do it on our own, right? It's really disappointing that if, if the lawyers and the accountants should have, should have been going and saying, include professional services in this enactment. We want it because it's anyway directed outside. It's not directed within. So therefore, what's the problem? What was the problem? But I think anyway, the wording is wide enough to be able to accommodate these lawyers and accountants and all that. But if, if, if the lawyers and accountants thought about it properly, they would have specifically asked for the name professional services to be included, right? To be able to get better opportunities for members of their profession.
Nirmal, so, sorry, I, I, I had a clarification here. I know the law restricts any legal firm or professional services firm set up in Port City providing their services in rest of Sri Lanka, right? There is a restriction unless otherwise, I think there is wording saying you need to, to protect the national interest, et cetera, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe, which may be to appeal to this sector, but it can still work the other way now, where some of these legal, you can provide your services to some of these large legal company, companies who will provide services within Port City and outside Port City.
Yeah, can do. That can be done. But yet, Tulsi, the fact is that the great experience is you work in that office, you work under people, right? You get direct contact. If not, you're like a B P O, no?
Hmm.
Not you're like a B P O. So then in such a case, whether that, that firm is in Hong Kong or if it's in the port city, it doesn't make much of a difference. So the real experiences would have been to be right in that office and then learn it as a, right, being an employee there or something like that. I think that, that, that opportunity, I'm not saying it's completely shut out. But, and I think I just need to make a comment, right? There are enough of lawyers out there who have, they have bought houses in the southern coast, right? People are calling and asking lockdown now, can I work from my house, my residence in, let's say, Angama? Right? Will I be violating any laws in Sri Lanka by rendering my services? They are not rendering services to locals, right? By doing their normal work which they were doing out of their London office. Now they are at home, right? In a southern province, some, some property. So there are a lot of categories of people who find Sri Lanka attractive place to work in. Not only Sri, not only foreigners, Indians and all that, they love to work here. So therefore, I think that category of person which are, which are top end, these are not, these are not the bottom end people, these are the top end people, partners and all that, right? So we should not lose that opportunity because that's a great opportunity also from a branding perspective. You just say that three of the top law firms have an office here, maybe two or three people staffing, but huge brand effect.
That's, that's, that's true, Nirmal. That's true. I'm, I'm mindful of the time. I have one more question from the audience that I want to take that's directed at Tulsi. Do you have any visibility on the government's plans for, you know, encouraging capital markets in, in the zone? Specifically relating to the stock exchange, we had one again, Capital Minister talking about a crypto exchange as well. Do you have any visibility of any plans so far about getting something going there?
Yeah, so, Deshan, if you, you carry the Colombo Stock Exchange, I've been trying to set up a multi-currency board for some time. Right? Their biggest challenge in fact had been the, the, the exchange control regulations. That has been their biggest challenge. We have, we are in discussions with them to really set up a multi-currency board in Port City. Because the ideal legal footing that is required for them to do that is provided here. And, and what we need to also understand, this law is only a framework law. It is just an enabler. You really need further regulations needs to be drafted under this law. At the same time, what you require is a, an exchange, multi-currency exchange that is appealing to the region where some of these companies can list here to raise their debt or equity capital, right? So which means having a banner of Colombo Stock Exchange may not really do. And so we have discussed with them to see whether they can really partner with a another regional exchange. I think those conversations are, are happening. And we hope, we are hopeful, I think, we are hopeful that we can realize, I think, one of the points that Nirmal made earlier is quite valid there because there is another S C C law is in the making. We just need to make sure that there's no issues due to that law because finally S C C is going to be the regulator. But yes, so those discussions are happening and probably you might hear few developments on that front before end of this year.
That's, that's good to hear. Tulsi, can I have? That's that's good to hear. Uh Tulsi, can I have ask one last question from you? What would you define as success for the port city? What would success look like in ten years' time in your view?
Yeah, I mean, success for Port City in ten years, as I said, completion of phase one. But that completion of phase one means that the the that success has to really be felt in rest of Sri Lanka, right? Success mean to me really also, we have a massive brain drain, right? So rather than these IT graduates coming out of this university is going to Singapore, Malaysia or London, wherever. Now they have the opportunity to work for Google in Port City, right? So that is really success for me and then creating that talent pool that is required. Because at the moment, what is really produced in our primary, secondary university system is not really what is required by the corporate. So I I feel there they have to be a massive paradigm shift, game changer. Because what you need to realize, we are a services oriented economy really. And we we talk about this knowledge-based economy, but we are really not going there. Because if you look at our graduate pool, right? Less than thirty percent are from STEM subjects, right? Of that thirty percent, a twenty-five percent leave. So this is what we are left with. So for us to be competitive in the region and to position ourselves to export our services. So we need talent retention is, I think, is quite key. And if we are successful in getting some large brands here. Uh to really come here, I I feel, in my opinion, and that that the economic impact of Port City have to be felt. For the rest of the country, not only from an economic perspective, also more from a uh policy reform perspective as well. So some of these policies that I've worked in Port City can be also rolled out. And finally, you know, we need a an SEC for whole of Sri Lanka like Singapore or Hong Kong.
Yeah, that's a that's a big ambition. I hope I hope it works out as uh as well as you imagine it. Uh Neemal, I'll ask you the the downside of that same question. We have, you know, what uh what do you feel are the big risks for execution on Port City? I think the the laws are now in place. Uh you have the commission, you hopefully will have a director general soon. Uh in especially from a regulatory and legal point of view, as you look at the accident, look at uh you know, what the direction is, what do you think could be the main risks for execution?
I think the main risk for execution is really, I really don't think that politically, anybody would try to tamper with it too much, right? And even if you look at how we have acted in relation to the BOI law, right, through they will complain at various points of time. But I think ninety-five percent of the time, I think the government has kept to its commitments. You ask a long-term investor on and off, they have done something uh which is in violation of some BOI agreement, the government by passing some law to the contrary and charge some tax or something. But by and large, ninety-five percent of the time, I think we have we have we have done it. So therefore, from a political point of view, I don't think anybody is going to touch anything which has already been given or try to try to mess about with that. In my view, basically, the the uptake has to be high, right? So if by some chance, my 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 best case scenario is uh there's an LRT which has a port city and you just go in the morning there at seven thirty and you see that stream of people coming out. The same way that you would see people walking on a street in Singapore, right? That for me is a success, right? It's 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 the mainstream of people, right? Being working in the port city, whether it's IT, BPO, whatever it is. I don't know whether that will be, that will necessarily mean high value addition. But for me, I think if by some chance we can't achieve that, right? I think then in such a case, I think Port City would not be a success. The mainstream of, as Tulsi says, the the mainstream of people should understand that there is benefits and that that should be actually seen to the eye, not necessarily value addition or something like that as computed in monetary terms.
Thanks, Neemal. With that being said, thank you to both of you, Tulsi and Neemal, for your valuable thoughts. Apologies again for the slight technical mishap at the beginning. Uh I hope everyone was able to uh uh to gain a much broader appreciation and understanding for the for the bill that was recently passed as well as the the ambitions of the Port City project in itself. Uh and we are at both of our panelists see the Port City heading in the next. So thank you, everyone, for joining. Thank you again to our panelists. Thank you to our sponsors. Platinum sponsor, Krampa Stock Exchange and silver sponsors Equity and and Health. And thank you for joining us and we hope to see you again at our next event in a few weeks' time. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Deshan.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.